From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Here.
Supervisor Maggard?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, May 25th, 2:00 PM meeting for the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council, I'm sorry, GK?
GK.
For a report taken on action in closed session.
GK is fine, Mr. Chairman. There are no reportable actions from closed session, end of report.
Thank you. Okay, we're pleased to announce and welcome members of the public back into the board chambers with available seating for up to 65 attendees at this time. While limited seating is available, the current public comment protocols remain in place, so testimony and general public comment are still accepted via email or voice message to the clerk of the board prior to today's meeting, and live comments via teleconference will be heard during the meeting. We'll begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA above are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the public wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning this item before action is taken. Members of the public may also comment on any closed session item. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda item numbers, and that is 22 through 24 on page six, 25 through 27 on page seven, 28 through 32 on page eight, 33 through 39 on page nine, 40 through 47 on page 10, 48 through 53 on page 11, and 54 through 58 on page 12. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one gentleman.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, sir.
Hello.
I am number 27. I don't believe that everything that was shown to be abated was done by the contractor. I have pictures prior to that of pretty much everything done, except for there was some plywood that was put on the back of our mobile, and they painted, and I have pictures and emails for dumpsters and everything for it.
Okay, so we can go ahead and pull that off the consent agenda, and then we'll just hear that in its regular listed sequence.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the public wanting to speak to the consent agenda?
I believe that the...
Please come up to the podium if you would.
I believe that the waste management fee is on the consent agenda. It looks actually to be there in a couple places, 21, 22, 23?
There are a couple individual ones that I believe are on the consent agenda, but the majority of them are not on consent.
Okay, I just...
And there will be public hearings for each of those items that you can speak during.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, any members of the board would like any items moved forward discussion? Okay, so with the exception of 27, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, we'll now consider item number one, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask questions for clarification, make referrals to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making the presentation. Are there any members of the public wanting to speak during this portion? Do we have anybody on the phone, Madam Clerk?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll now consider item number two, board member announcements and reports. Okay, so items three through 21 under the Public Works Department are all public hearings related to solid waste charges, and the department has requested that we consider these items in two groups. We'll first hear items three through 10 concurrently, but we will vote on each item separately. Mr. Pope, would you please introduce the first topic we'll be considering?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a day we set the rates for the hauling of garbage throughout Kern County. We refer to it as a Prop 218 process, and the reason we do that is a process defined by law that we use to set rates. If it is a rate of, if you're charging a fee to a property owner that is based on his property, then you have to go through this process. And it's a very good process. It lays out everything, it defines how much we contact the people, what their opportunities are for protest and everything, so it's very lengthy. We've been at it since September for this day, hardcore since December. It is a long, arduous process, but it is how we feel we come to a good conclusion in that we've given everybody a chance to see what we're proposing and a chance to talk about what it is we're proposing. So this is a protest hearing. It doesn't require a majority of the people to approve it, it would require a majority of the people to disapprove it. So what we have done is mailed out votes, or the ability to vote, and we then tally up those votes. We are looking at three different categories. Holler rates, in other words, the fee that is collected and paid to the haulers. The hauler admin fee, this is the fee that's on the bills that we utilize to fund ourselves to handle this process that we're going through. And the land use fee is something that we are expanding its realm a little bit to include illegal dumping, or we propose to expand it to include illegal dumping resources throughout the county. That will be resources for county and cities. We'll be dividing them up by the amount of maintained roads that they have. 218, we process, we send out 303,791 notices to property owners for the 21-22 solid waste rates. Solid waste collection fees, this is what is actually paid to the haulers. It comes in two realms. One is a universal collection area. This is for residential, that is a defined area where it's mandatory service in those areas. The non-tax roll areas could be residential or commercial, and it's not mandatory. It's up to the customer to pay directly to the franchise hauler, or they may self-haul. The recycling surcharge is also being talked about. Previously approved by Prop 218 process in May of 2019, it was phased in over time. Residential properties and universal collection area, it's $20.52 per year. Non-tax roll bill, it's $1.71 per month. Commercial properties rate is set by the bin size. The solid waste admin fee, we refer to as the hauler admin fee, pays for the administrative costs of handling the franchise hauler agreements, and again, the majority of that time is spent just on this topic, what we're doing today, on tax build or build directly by hauler, depending on the type of property. The solid waste management program service charge, we refer to as the land use fee, is on the residential tax bill. This pays for the programs that we do to process the garbage. It's everything that we do in Public Works to handle the landfills and transfer stations. The increase proposed is to expand outside of that to start doing illegal dumping cleanup, more than we have been doing. Go back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll start with the first group, which includes all Prop 218 agenda items that are included on the tax rolls. We'll be combining agenda items number three through number 10 since they're functionally equivalent for process, so they will be heard concurrently as one hearing, but still treated separately for voting processes. This is the time and place for the public hearing to consider the rate increases and the proposed ordinance establishing the schedule of solid waste collection charges, hauler admin fees, and land use fees for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, and providing for collection of the same on the tax roll for residential properties. Buttonwill Universal Collection Area, East Kern Universal Collection Area, Lost Hills Universal Collection Area, Metropolitan Bakersfield Universal Collection Area, South Shafter Universal Collection Area, Incorporated Taft Universal Collection Area, solid waste administration fee, and solid waste management program service charges. So, Mr. Pope, could you continue your presentation on those areas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we'll talk about each individual item, and this, again, is just presentation of the information. The voting will come at a later part, but three through 10 are all on the tax roll itself, that's why we grouped them together. So item number three is the Buttonwill Universal Collection Area. The hauler is Westside Waste Management, Inc.
I feel so humbled when I'm at the dunes. I've never felt this way before about a place. There's an immensity to the dunes. You feel like you're a visitor. You could never survive here on your own, but these plants have been able to accomplish that. It's not just a big pile of sand. It's a habitat to some of the rarest plants that we have. I'm in awe every time I come here.
When many people visit the desert or think of the desert, they think of this, of sand dunes. But in reality, only about 1% of deserts are covered in sand. In Death Valley, you can find several different sets of dunes, including the Ibex Dunes, the Buckwheat Dunes, Panama Dunes, the Mesquite Flat Sand Dunes, Saline Valley Dunes, the Eureka Dunes, my favorite because of their scale, it's like a mountain of sand.
Today, we're in Eureka Valley doing the rare plant survey of the dune plants that live We're at the Eureka Valley Sand Dunes. They are approximately 700 feet tall, and they are the tallest dunes in Death Valley National Park. This information is going to be used to track the populations of these rare plants in accordance with the Endangered Species Act.
There are eight different species of plants and animals that call Eureka Dunes home that live nowhere else in the world. We call these endemic species. All of them have one thing in common, they're stuck here. Mostly, the beetles can't move very quickly, so they can't wander about and find other dune systems to move to, and a lot of the plants have lived here for thousands of years and can't escape the valley.
The Eureka Dune grass is what we...
Two per year. Item number nine, solid waste administration fee. This is the hauler admin fee I talked about. It compensates for the cost of managing the franchise hauler contract. Proposed rate, 40 cents per month per residential unit or commercial unit. It is... It is on the property tax roll for residential properties in the universal collection areas. It's directly billed by hauler for residential and commercial properties not on the tax Item number 10, solid waste management program service charge. We refer to it as a land use fee. Proposed increase to provide additional illegal dumping resources to the county and the incorporated cities. Proposed rate, one to four residential units, 105 per year per unit. Five or more residential units, 84 per year per unit. On the property tax roll for all residential properties. The gate fee remains at $45 per ton, and the bin fee remains at $234 per cubic yard of bin capacity.
Back to you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Before I open the hearing, are there any property owners who wish to file a written protest regarding the increased fees or the placement of those charges on the tax roll for any of these agenda items? If so, they must be filed with the Clerk of the Board now, so, or, excuse me, as no protest will be considered that is submitted after the close of the hearing. Madam Clerk, have there been any written protests filed with you prior to this time for these items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have tabulated those protests, and they have been received by Public Works.
Thank you. I will now open the hearing and receive comments from any interested persons regarding any of these areas.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on the line, so if you wouldn't mind, can we go to our teleconference line? And we're going to hear from Mr. Rob Golden. Mr. Golden, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you may address the Board.
Hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Can the Board, can the Board hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Number 10, my argument is, I'm a homeowner up here in Fraser Park, and my argument is, why is it that the Board of Supervisors and whoever decides on how these rates are going to be done, why do the, why do the homeowners always are the ones that are responsible for this? That's a question that I'm proposing to you as a, as a Board of Supervisors.
Okay, do you have any other comments, sir?
Yes. I, my, one of my comments is, why couldn't we have everyone in the pool? Everyone, one way or another, you know, has to throw their waste away. So, my, my thing is, I think that we should have everyone responsible for these fees, especially this, this is number 10, that I'm talking about right now. Why, why can't everyone, it's just like insurance, car insurance, why can't everyone be responsible? Because we're, we should all be responsible citizens. Homeowners should not be the ones that, that pick up the tab for people that are not responsible. And, and actually, your homeowners, Board, your homeowners are the ones who are probably the most responsible, in my opinion. And I, I want to give you a kind of an idea of what I'm, what I'm talking about here. Why can't we have advertising on billboards and, and send out flyers about dumping waste and so forth? Why can't we talk with the, with the law authorities about being more observant of people that, that dump their trash or throw their trash out the windows of their car? Because I have picked up much trash along the sides of the roads many times in the past with our church and with other organizations. Another thing, why, why couldn't, why couldn't we be more like the European countries over in Europe? I don't know if any of the Board has been over in Europe, but I, I was over there in the 70s, and that, that country is so beautiful and so kept up, that people in that country care for their, their landscape and their country. And so, I, I don't know why we can't better educate the, the public on how important it is to keep our country clean and beautiful. And I think we can do this by such things as, like I say, advertising, and advertising about care for our surrounding. Larger fines, when someone throws out something out the window and a police officer sees it, it's supposed to be a $1,000 fine. That's what I see on the signs everywhere in our community. Why can't that be increased to $5,000 or $10,000, something where it really hits home for the person that does it? And I, I just feel, as a homeowner and as an American citizen, that we need to try a different approach rather than having the, the homeowner pick up the responsibility for all this, or the landlords that pick up the responsibility for all this. It should be divvied out to everyone because everyone is involved with this. And I, I just want to leave that with you because I think that we need to change the way we're looking at things with homeowners, because it's not right, what, I don't feel it's right, the way that the homeowners were always the ones that, that pick up the buck or pick up the tab.
Okay.
And I wanted to leave that with you, and thank you, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Pope, would you like to respond to any of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I certainly would, because I think Mr. Goldman made a lot of good points. We have participated in an education process that is up and down the state of California, and they, they agree with the exact same points. It's education, enforcement, and eradication. Education, why aren't we communicating to our people through the schools and whatnot of what our expectation of keeping our community clean are? And we're going to do more of that. We have programs now, we're going to expand on them. Enforcement will require the participation of law enforcement and the DA to make that stick, so that's work to be done. Eradication is really what we're focusing on here. And Mr. Goldman brought up, why is it the property owners? Well, it is the property owners, it's also on the multifamily dwelling, it's on all the people that live here. So it's not just on a homeowner, per se, it's on everybody that lives in Kern County.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Madam Clerk, is there anybody else on the teleconference?
No one else on the teleconference. I did want to make sure that your Board was aware, you received via email 18 emails related to item number 10, the land use fee item, and you have copies of those in front of you. 17 are opposed to the fee and one in support of the fee, and those have been received and filed.
Thank you. Okay, are there any speakers that would like to speak on this issue?
My name's Mitch Hoddrick, and I live in Rosemont, 3108 Don Road, and I sympathize with the gentleman I just heard, and I, I wish the measures weren't so broad sweeping, but it's just a fact of the matter. I can only speak on my little area of where I live, in Rosemont, and the scope and the level of bullet casings in refrigerators and toasters. A deputy said there was a human leg found in the area I'm talking about, and it's a mile and a half from where I live, and it's a mile outside of the city of Rosemont. There are three separate properties, each assigned to APN number, and when I call law enforcement, I get, it's BLM, it's, it's, it's private property, it's dove hunting. Look, I, you never ask a question you don't already know the answer to, and when I've done the research on it, I sit back and listen to some of the excuses of not enforcing the random gunshots almost on a 24-hour, sometimes during the night, and the amount of trash is immense. I knew that the county was going to raise our, raise the taxes, because no one is going to do this for free, and this is just a fact of the matter. And again, I sympathize with the gentleman. I'm on a fixed income also, but nothing gets done for free, and I want everybody to understand it. It's not a popular, I'm not, I'm not taking a popular stance, because I'm, I'm, I'm for the raise in these taxes because of the level of destruction that I see in my, in my community, and, and the safety concerns. Just this past Mother's Day, it sounded as if I was watching Sable Pride and Ryan, man, with, with the, with the, with the volume turned up, and this is just the way it is. And when you call someone for help and you get, we cannot do anything, that is not the America that gentleman was talking about, because, you know, I've been used to handling things my own way, but now I have to rely on other people doing it for me. You know, I'm a citizen now. But I applaud the, the Board, and, and I'm humbled here to speak. I'm with you 110% about raising these taxes, because it needs to be done. We all live in Kern County. It's just that my little bit needs a little attention because of the abject danger that we have to face, especially on the weekends. And these aren't county people coming, they're coming over the line from LA County because they think it's a legal gun range. But there are certain things you have to do in order to open a business like that. There's EPA considerations, you, you have to have one of those big signs, and I wanted to go on the record, I know I'm preaching to the choir right now, but when you do a new business, a proposed business, because we got new businesses on Rosemont Boulevard, those big, big white signs that you see, for you to come here to oppose if a business can go into business, there's, there's nothing done for a gun range. You know how dangerous that is? Anyways, I appreciate the opportunity. I've been in contact with Mr. Strybner's office, Josh Foster, I've been talking to him for the last eight months. I've sent pictures to the code enforcement, I can't think of his name, I wrote it down, but Mr. Ron Smith, the inspector, came out to inspect what he already knew. He, he already knew. In fact, one of the properties was retaken from, it was Camp David LLC. If I, if I go on the record, you can do the research, that property was lost from Camp David LLC and somehow granted back to either Kern County or the city of Rosamont. So Rosamont actually owns a part of the area where the, where the problem lies. You understand what I'm saying? I, I have so much, but I want everybody else to have a chance to talk to. I know it's not popular, and Kern County is huge, but Rosemont needs a little attention because folks are using it as a dumping, shooting range, and they are not all Kern County residents.
Thank you, sir. Could we have our next speaker, please?
I just want to say that I know you have a difficult job here.
Can you provide us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Lori Davis.
Thank you.
L-A-U-R-I-E. I know that you have a difficult job, and I want to agree, apparently, there was a city, I don't know what city it was, but they were quoted in the paper today saying that this is the wrong time for this, and I think it is the wrong time for this. You know, we're all dealing with COVID, and I, I think people aren't really paying attention right now. That's why you probably don't have this chambers packed. But I'm a homeowner, and this always seems to come back onto the homeowner to pay for these things. I, I think that, and I know law enforcement has a difficult job right now, but I think that's where the problem is with law enforcement. They need to, and, and I agree with the gentleman on the phone, we need to raise the, the fines for this. You know, if you're caught dumping. I know I don't put garbage in my car and take it out and dump it, but I don't really want to pay for the people who do. But, you know, it's just not appropriate to continue to, no pun intended, dump this on the property owners. You know, it's, and, you know, I, and I, and I understand, I mean, I drive around and I see all this trash around, and yeah, it bothers me, bothers me a great deal, but I don't, I don't know where this is going to end. You know, if it's not the federal government, if it's not the city, if it's not the county, if it's not the state, if someone's got their hand in our pockets. And I'm, and I'm just, I want government to get their hands out of our pockets, you know, it's just, it's, it's not appropriate. You know, and, and I honestly don't think, it's probably property owners that are dumping all this, but we have to pay for it, and I just don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Dixon. I live in, that's D-I-X-O-N. I live in unincorporated Tatchby, in specific Old West Ranch, which is an off-grid community. We pretty much take care of ourselves and don't, don't rely too often on the things we pay taxes for. I'm here to state my opposition to the solid waste management program service fee, specifically the illegal dumping portion of it. Although I agree illegal dumping is a serious problem, this proposal does not speak to fixing the issue, rather it will encourage offenders to continue their behavior since the taxpayers will clean up after them still. For me, this is not a $20 a year to a good cause deal. I own 10 parcels, so based on what was mailed to me, it looked like about a $20, $23 increase. Well, times 10, I take it a little more seriously. One of which of those parcels is the only one that generates trash, which I, by the way, legally take to the dump. I'm not one to come without proposing alternatives. Invest in law enforcement to catch and heavily fine the offenders. Everyone else has spoken to raising penalties, and I'm with that. Get some money from the illegal pot growers that have taken over my neighborhood. They seem to be making a fortune and paying no taxes, and that is actually an issue I'd like to take up at another meeting. And perhaps find some grant money to keep volunteer organizations like the Conservation Corps doing their good work. And I just would like to urge you not to adopt this particular portion of the fees. I understand fuel costs going up and all of that, but this is not going to fix trash dumping. It's, it's only going to encourage it. And I just wonder if you believe that someone who would throw trash on the streets goes out and votes? I do. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
My name is Stephen West, W-E-S-T, and I live at 9721 Richland Hills Lane, Bakersfield, California. That's Four Seasons, that's a 55 and older community, and I think I can speak for all of them that they're all, they all would be opposed to this tax increase. I really think that the money should be allocated to the Police Department or the Sheriff's Department to police this. I don't believe that having the homeowners pay these fees will stop any of the dumping that's currently occurring. I believe another option for the council would be to do this on a 12-month trial run to see, if you pass it, can we do it on a, on a time schedule that, we'll see if we see any progress. I mean, we're talking about spending millions of dollars on this project, and it won't go away. It just begin, begins adding and adding and adding, like we have so many other fees. So, I think if we, if we implemented it, if you say, hey, we're going to pass this, and we're going to do it for 12 months, and we're going to see if the, if we can clean this mess up, which I think is really hard to do, because I don't think the homeowners are creating the mess, and I think that if we really want to see it end, we have the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, or a private security firm, to find the heck out of these people that are doing this dumping. We also could take our homeless people that are living in the parkways and move them out, move them to Taft, move them to the prison where we have a place to where we can organize them, not roam the city. It's disgusting and it's embarrassing to see all of the homeless people in downtown Bakersfield and throughout Old Town Bakersfield. So I am opposed, I think that all 400-plus members of Four Seasons would be opposed. I think that all 400-plus members of Four Seasons would be opposed. I know that because I'm on several boards, that normally we only get about 5% people responding versus all the people that really have some concerns. So the number I think that you've had respond to your flyer has been pretty significant, even if it's only 400 or 500 people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay. If anybody else wants to file a written protest, this is the last opportunity to do so before we move to voting. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. So we will now vote on each agenda item individually, beginning with agenda item number three, Buttonwillow Universal Collection Area. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for the Buttonwillow Universal Collection Area?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have 400 parcels in this item. It's item number three, it's Buttonwillow Universal Collection Area. There are 400 parcels in it, so 50% plus one threshold is 201 votes would have been needed. And we have zero verified protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I'm now turn it back over to the board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
I will move that. That's Buttonwillow's in the 4th district, so I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, East Kern Universal Collection Area. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for the East Kern Universal Collection Area?
Item number four, Eastern Kern Universal Collection Area. The number of parcels in this area was 717. 50% plus one threshold was 359. We had four protest votes filed, four verified protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. So I turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation for item number four?
So moved.
Second. Please cast your votes. Okay.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Sorry, Kathy. Agenda item number five, Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for Lost Hills Universal Collection Area?
Agenda item number five, Lost Hills Universal Collection Area. Parcels in this protest hearing were 343. 50% plus one threshold was 173. We received 197 protest votes, so this was a successful protest. So, Mr. Chairman, on this item, we did receive the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. This area is in universal collection. The Public Works Department has already substituted the ordinance that was prepared and reviewed by county council to allow the 2021 rate to remain in place and be placed on the tax roll for 2122. I turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion, but I also have a question. I think this is the second time in a row that this has happened with that area.
Through the chair and supervisor couch, that's correct.
So I would like to, no hurry, but I'd like to have a discussion with you about the options for the hauler and the options for the community if, you know, if the trend continues and the hauler can no longer afford to provide the service, what are our legal options? Not right now, but I'd like to have that discussion later. And I made a motion on your recommendation, Mr. Pope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Item number six, Metropolitan Bakersfield Universal Waste Collection Area. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for the Metropolitan Bakersfield Universal Collection Area?
Thank you. Item number six, Metropolitan Bakersfield Universal Collection Area. The number of parcels in this area are 46,934. A 50% plus one threshold would have been 23,468. We received 42 protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. So I turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, item number seven, South Shaftor Universal Collection Area. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for the South Shaftor Collection Area?
Item number seven, South Shaftor Universal Collection Area. The number of parcels in this protest hearing, 1,043. A 50% plus one threshold would have been 523. We had zero protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. So I turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Agenda item number eight.
Hang on just a second.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. The motion is approved, all ayes.
On a roll. Unincorporated Taft Universal Collection Area. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for the unincorporated Taft Universal Collection Area?
Item number eight, unincorporated Taft Universal Collection Area. Number of parcels in this protest hearing, protest hearing area were 3,319. 50% plus one threshold, 1,661. We only had one protest vote. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to the board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Next is agenda item number nine, solid waste administration fee. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protests for the solid waste administration fee?
Agenda item number nine, solid waste administration fee, we refer to as a hauler admin fee. The parcel in this protest hearing were 71,687. A 50% plus one threshold would have been 35,845. We received 259 votes of protest. We have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation? I'll go ahead and make the motion on item number nine.
Second.
Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Okay, next is agenda item number 10, solid waste management program service charge. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for the solid waste management program service charge?
Item number 10, solid waste management program service charge, referred to as a land use fee. Parcels in this protest hearing, 232,104. A 50% plus one threshold, 116,053 votes. The up-to-date count was 452 protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. I would like to ask if we could get a report back maybe at a future meeting on our options for increasing fees or penalties or how we might go about that for illegal dumpers or, you know, maybe look at some kind of strategy for working with law enforcement to, you know, further that enforcement effort. That would be appreciated. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation for number 10?
So moved. Staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second it. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Okay, we've now concluded voting on the first group and will proceed to the next group. These are all Prop 218 items that are not on the tax roll. So we'll continue with the second group, including Prop 218 items not included on the tax roll. We'll be combining agenda items number 11 through 21, since they are functionally equivalent for process, and they will be heard concurrently as one hearing, but still treated separately for voting purposes. And this is the time and place for the public hearing to consider the rate increases and the proposed ordinances establishing the schedule of solid waste collection charges for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. That's for commercial zone 1, 2, commercial zone 3, franchise areas 3, 19, 38, and 43. Commercial zone 3, franchise areas 5 and 10. Residential non-tax roll build zone 1, franchises areas 9 and 42. Residential non-tax roll build zone 1, franchise area 17. Residential non-tax roll build zone 1, franchise area 44. Residential non-tax roll build zone 2, zone 3, franchises areas 3, 19, 38, and 43. Residential non-tax roll build zone 3, franchise areas 5 and 10. Mr. Pope, can you please show your presentation concerning these areas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number 11, commercial zone 1. The haulers are Westside Waste Management, Inc., American refuse, South Tillery, Rich Grove refuse. We're proposing a CPI and fuel factor to be added 3.5%. The rate is set by the bin size for the bins. Recycling surcharge rate is again set by the bin size. Item number 12, commercial zone 2. The haulers, Valley Garbage Service, Superior Sanitation, Varner and Son, Howard's Garbage Service, Varner Brothers, Price Disposal, Lamont Sanitation. We're proposing a CPI and fuel factor added of 3.5%. The rate is set by bin size and the recycling surcharge rate is set again by the bin size. Agenda item number 13, commercial zone 3, franchise areas 3, 19, 38, and 43. The hauler, Waste Management, Inc., CPI and fuel factor added 0.6%. The rate is set by the bin size and recycling surcharge, again, the rate is set by the bin Item number 14, commercial zone 3, franchise areas 5 and 10. The haulers, Thomas refuse, Mountainside disposal, proposing a CPI and fuel factor to be added of 3.5%. Rate is set by bin size. Recycling surcharge rate is set by bin size. Item number 15, residential non-tax roll build zone 1, franchise areas 9 and 42. The hauler, Westside Waste Management, Inc. This is the voluntary service. It's not mandatory. CPI and fuel factor added, proposed 3.5%. Residential rate proposed is 2377 per month. Recycling service, 742 per month. Recycling surcharge is $1.71 per month. Agenda item number 16, residential non-tax roll build zone 1, franchise area 17. The hauler, American refuse, Inc. This is voluntary service. The CPI fuel factor proposed 3.5%. Residential rate proposed would be 2362 per month. Recycling service is 742 per month. Recycling surcharge is $1.71 per month. Agenda item number 17, residential non-tax roll build zone 1, franchise area 44. Hauler, South Tillery, Rich Grove refuse. Voluntary service. The proposed CPI fuel factor would be 3.5%. Residential rate proposed 2435 per month. Recycling service is 742 per month. Recycling surcharge is $1.71 per month. Item number 18, residential non-tax roll build zone 2. The haulers, Valley Garbage Service, Superior Sanitation, Varner and Son, Howard's Garbage Service, Varner Brothers, Price Disposal, Lamont Sanitation. This is voluntary service. The proposed CPI fuel factor had to be added 3.5%. Residential rates proposed on a monthly basis, single family, 2104. Multi-family, two to four units, 1858 per unit. Condos, mobile home parks, 1683 per unit. Recycling service, 457 per unit. And a recycling surcharge of $1.71 per month. Agenda item number 19, residential non-tax roll build zone 3, franchise areas 3, 19, 38, 43. The hauler, Waste Management, Inc. This is a voluntary service. The CPI fuel factor proposed 0.6%. Residential rate proposed is 2279 per month. Recycling service is 742 per month. Recycling surcharge is $1.71 per month. Item number 20, residential non-tax roll build zone 3, franchise area 5. The hauler, Thomas refuse, Inc. This is voluntary service. Proposed CPI fuel factor, 3.5%. Residential rate proposed is 2526 per month. Recycling service is only available as a blue bag service at no charge. Item number 21, residential non-tax roll build zone 3, franchise area number 10. Hauler is Mountainside Disposal, Inc. This is a voluntary service. CPI fuel factor proposed 3.5% increase. Residential rate proposed would be 2362 per month. Recycling service is 742 per month. Recycling surcharge is $1.71 per month. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Before opening the public hearing, is there any property owner who wishes to file a written protest regarding increased rates for any of these agenda items? If so, they must be filed with the clerk of the board now, as no protest will be considered that is submitted after the close of the hearing. Madam Clerk, have there been any written protests filed with you prior to this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, those have been tabulated and provided to Public Works.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing and receive comments from any interested persons from any of these areas.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Rob Golden on the line who would like to address your board concerning item number 21. Mr. Golden, you can unmute your phone by pressing star 6 and address the board.
Can the board hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. About, I would say, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago, we had steadily gotten increases in our trash pickup from Mountainside. And I spoke to someone that was involved with the increase and he told me that the reason why they were increasing at that time was because of the gas prices were going up. If that's when, I don't know if the board remembers, it was around, I don't know how long ago, but it was around $5 a gallon or more at that one time. He said, I said to him, I said, "Well, what happens if the gas prices go back down? Are you going to lower the rates if the prices are going down? If you're saying that the rates, the prices are going up, it's going to be more." He said, "Well, I can't really tell you that, but we would look into that." And so that didn't make any difference. We never did get a decrease in our, and the prices had gone down to $2 a gallon back, you know, throughout the time of gas prices have fluctuated a lot. the gas prices have fluctuated a lot. So that was one of my concerns about using the gas prices as an increase thing. When you, when the gas prices go back down, I never see the prices of anything go back down. You know, that's caused by using more gas, the garbage trucks and so forth. And I can tell you back, we moved up here in Fraser Park back in 1989, in June of 1989, and we were paying $9 a month for our garbage service. And now it is going to $23.62 a month. I know that was a long time ago, but I just, some of these reasonings for raising prices bothers me. And I wanted to speak about what that experience I had with that gentleman back years ago that told me, "Well, that's because the gas prices have gone up." And as you know, as the board knows, the gas prices, I've been around a while, and I'm sure some of you have too. And gas prices fluctuate a lot. They'll go way down, they'll come way up. And I think that the board should take that in consideration. And I can't complain about our service up here. It's been good. We do pay for our service. We do recycle our own bottles and so forth. We don't use a recycling system that came into effect not too long ago. But we're grateful for the services that we have. And I'm grateful for the Board of Supervisors that at least hears us out and makes, hopefully, an intelligent decision on what's the best thing for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on any of these items? Okay. If anyone wishes to file a written protest, this is the last opportunity to do so. Okay, the public hearing is now closed.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask our staff here to comment on that? That's kind of a recurring comment that gas prices went up, a fee increase was granted, gas prices came down. Other things I know happened in there, but if I try to explain it, it's just going to sound like an excuse. You know more the details of that. So can you kind of describe what happened in that long time period that the last caller was talking about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Couch through the chair. The price increase proposed is not just fuel factor. It is a consumer price index and fuel factor. In other words, the fuel is only one portion of it. It has to do with everything else. It is a summation of the cost of labor, housing, everything else, and it's published by, we use the Southern California Index for this area. And it takes into account everything. And if fuel being one portion, we've discussed with others, you know, is there a better way of doing this? And everybody, almost everybody uses the Consumer Price Index. So that's a typical way of doing it. So it's not just fuel.
Were there other state mandates that have come along that have impacted the levels of service and the costs as well?
Yes, there have. And we're going to be seeing more of those in the upcoming years. Senate Bill 1383 is coming, and there's going to be put a lot more responsibilities on the entities that handle the garbage. So unfortunately, we'll probably be seeing greater increases as we go.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, we'll now vote on each agenda item individually, beginning with the Agenda Item Number 11 for Commercial Zone 1. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protests for Commercial Zone 1?
Thank you, yes. Item Number 11, Commercial Zone 1. The number of parcels in this area, 508. A 50% plus 1 threshold, 255. We received zero protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I ask to turn it back over to the board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Commercial Zone 2. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for Commercial Zone 2 properties?
Item 12, Commercial Zone 2. The number of parcels in this protest hearing were 3,000. A 50% plus 1 threshold is 1,501. We've only had four protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to the board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
Motion.
Second. Supervisor Maggard, second. Sorry. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, next is Agenda Item 13, Commercial Zone 3, Franchise Areas 3, 19, 38, and 43. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these Commercial Zone areas?
Item Number 13, Commercial Zone 3, Franchise Areas 3, 19, 38, 43. Number of parcels in this protest hearing area, 671. A 50% plus 1 threshold would be 337. We have one verified protest vote. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to the board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
Salute.
Second. Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item Number 14, Commercial Zone 3, Franchise Areas 5 and 10. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for Commercial Zone 3, Franchise Areas 5 and 10 properties?
Agenda Item Number 14, Commercial Zone 3, Franchise Areas 5 and 10. The number of parcels in this protest hearing area, 544. A 50% plus 1 threshold, 273. We received zero protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
Motion.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item 15, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 1, Franchise Areas 9 and 42. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Item Number 15, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 1, Franchise Areas 9 and 42. The number of parcels in this protest hearing area, 772. 50% plus 1 threshold would be 387. We have only received two votes in protest. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
Motion.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item 16, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 1, Franchise Area 17. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Item Number 16, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 1, Franchise Area 17. The number of parcels in this area, 1,002. 50% plus 1 threshold, 502. We received zero protest votes for this area. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item 17, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 1, Franchise Area 44. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Agenda Item Number 17, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 1, Franchise Area 44. Number of parcels in this area, protest hearing area, 773. 50% plus 1 threshold, 388. We received zero votes in protest. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item Number 18, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 2. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Item Number 18, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 2. Parcels in this protest hearing area, 672. A 50% plus 1 threshold would be 100 and, no, that can't be right. 337. We have received zero verified protest votes. So, Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item Number 19, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 3, Franchise Areas 3, 19, 38, and 43. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Agenda Item Number 19, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 3, Franchise Areas 3, 19, 38, and 43. The number of parcels in this protest hearing were 1,164. The 50% plus 1 threshold was 583. Sorry again for the mistake there. Mr. Chairman, we only received two votes, two protest votes. So we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved, all eyes.
Agenda Item Number 20, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 3, Franchise Area 5. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Item Number 20, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 3, Franchise Area Number 5. Total number of parcels in this protest hearing area, 6,576. A 50% plus 1 threshold would be 3,289. We've had three protest votes. Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, and lastly, Agenda Item Number 21, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 3, Franchise Area 10. Mr. Pope, would you please summarize the written protest results for these properties?
Item Number 21, Residential non-tax roll build Zone 3, Franchise Area 10. Number of parcels in this protest hearing, 3,249. A 50% plus 1 threshold, 1,626. We did receive three protest votes in this area. Mr. Chairman, we have not received the minimum number of written protests to mandate that this item not pass. I now turn it back over to your board for consideration and vote.
Do we have a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you. We've now concluded voting on the second group, and this completes the public hearings for all of these solid waste agenda items. And we will now consider Item Number 27, Protest Hearing on Proposed Confirmation of Costs Encurred for Nuisance Abatement Work Located at 6504 Canyon Avenue in Enyo Kern. And I, give me one moment. Okay, sorry about that. I will turn it over to Mr. Pope and Mr. Onan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask Assistant Director Non to give a little report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is a protest hearing on proposed confirmation of cost for the property that is located at 6504 Canyon Avenue in Eau Kern. This property was determined by our office to constitute a public nuisance. The property is owned by Michael Smith and Candy Smith. It was found to be in violation of several county ordinance, more specifically, trash, junk, and debris, and lack of building maintenance and miscellaneous items. The property owners were notified that a public nuisance existed and they were provided a description of those nuisances. The owners of the subject properties were given a reasonable time to abate the nuisance. Several notices and orders were mailed via U.S. Mail, first-class postage prepaid on July 10, 2020, and August 19, 2020. It was also posted on the subject property on July 13, 2020, and August 25, 2020. The final notice was mailed in the same manner on October 6, 2020, and was posted on the subject property on October 12, 2020. There was still no effort by the property owners to abate those violations. Public Works Department abated those nuisances or violations in accordance with Kern County Ordinance Chapter 844. The notice and order to the property owners informed them that if they failed to abate the nuisance and the county was required to abate those nuisance or the violations, all costs associated with the abatement would be assessed against the property and could be collected as a special assessment on the tax bill for the property. On or around December 12, 2020, abatement work was done by the county, private contractor. The work which was done to abate those violations on the property in general consisted of securing and boarding doors, broken windows, and openings, removing trash, junk, and debris from the exterior of the premises, and cutting, trimming, and cleaning excessive vegetation. A notice of protest hearing on the proposed confirmation of cost for the nuisance abatement work and statement of verified expense was prepared for this project, showing a total cost of $5,479.57. Included in the notice of the protest hearing was a statement that your board would consider these costs at today's hearing. This notice of protest hearing was posted on the property on April 8, 2020, and was mailed first-class postage on March 12, '21 to the property owner. This department is requesting your board to conduct a hearing. And here, the owner, I believe the owner is here. He's protesting this. And and also inform them that if the cost remains unpaid for 10 days, if your board wishes to agree with the staff recommendation, it shall become a special assessment. recommendation, it shall become a special assessment against the subject property. That concludes staff report, and we are open for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anon. So, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I would invite Mr. Smith or Ms. Smith to come down to the podium.
Thank you, sir. We're not contesting that the property was, needed some work done on it. Due to the earthquake, we tried to get contractors come out. We couldn't get anybody to do it with the $3 billion worth of work being done at the base. I work for the construction contract, is the production controller in QA, quality assurance, for all the construction contracts. So, at the time, and my wife works as a contractor of the county, working with CPS. So, or not for, but she works conjunction with. But, so our time was really tied up with the earthquake, and then the pandemic hit. And so, we're not contesting that the work needed to be done. We're contesting, as it said, on or about December 12th, the work that he described was performed. But on November 21st, we had performed pretty much 90% of what is being stated that the contractor performed. And we're contesting that the contractor's bill to the county is fraudulent. And I have pictures here, and I also have email correspondence when we were working from November 3rd through the 24th, I believe it is, with Waste Management to get a roll-off out there to dispose of everything.
Okay. We filled the roll-off with all the stuff. And I'm sorry we didn't make copies for all of the board members, but...
No, no problem. Mr. Anon or Mr. Pope, would either of you guys like to respond to that, or do you need a few minutes?
I'm sorry, did you say December 21st?
No, you said on or about December 12th. This was November 21st. Can I re-see?
Yeah, well, what I said in here, that we did do the work on or around December 12, correct.
November 21st.
We did the work the first and second weekends of November, and those pictures are from December 20, or November 21st. It shows all the work being done already.
So, we can go through that. What they're showing pictures of being, we'd taken, covered up the windows and the doors. We'd taken out all the trash and vegetation, and then...
Sir, just because this is a public hearing, could you come back to the podium so we can hear your comments?
Mr. Chairman and board members, based on our record and the pictures that we have here on file, it does appear he did some work back in, prior to the abatement of our work. However, there were still remaining items to be done, and which were not done. Again, this violation started back in June of 2020. He was given several notifications. The only communication that we have had with the property owners, according to this record, there was a phone call that our code compliance calls, recalls, that was back in June or July. And at that time, the owner indicated that he would take care of the property and clean it up. He did. However, we sent other notifications that apparently somebody was continuing to break into the property. And so, some of the violations were still there up to 12, 11, 2020. And that is when our code compliance officer was there, and he posted a 24-hour notice and abatement warrant on the site. And between 12, 11, and 12, 16, that's when we had the contractor clean up the property and board the openings in the mobile home. Yes, they did do some work, but it was not to the standard that we have.
I respectfully... I disagree with you, because your gentleman came out in the beginning of November, and yes, the work had not been done. We had done, we performed the work prior to your contractor going out. That's what we're contesting. Your contractor had, it appears, went and painted the wood that we had put on the windows indoors, and also applied some more on the rear of the trailer. But all of the vegetation, everything, was gone. There's no way that vegetation would come back. Yeah, within literally three weeks. And like I said, I have the pictures to show on the 21st what we had done.
Did you by chance contact their department at all, and let them know that the work had been done, or had been abated?
I cannot remember if I called them or not. When I called before, I asked them to call us back. I know that part, if they had any questions. But I can't recall if I did or not. I apologize.
Okay.
We did the work, and we just assumed it was done, because we had complied with all the violations that they had said we had out there.
Gotcha. Is there anything else you about to add, Mr. Anon?
No, the only thing I want to add, I just want to add that we did send several notices, and it appears that they did receive those notices certified mailed, one, according to this record, at least one that was signed by them, or somebody at an address that we have in our record on 10/9/2020. So, they were aware of the... That was the final notice we sent to them. And also, we sent, there was a signed receipt, received from them on 7/21/20... I mean, 2020. And again, the only communication according to our record by, through them, by our code compliance was back in June or August.
Okay. And the contractor that performed all that work, they have an itemized list of the work they performed that they've submitted for all that?
That is correct. Typically, we have three contractors that submit bids, and we go by the lowest one. And they do go out to the field, and their bid is based on the work that was remaining to be done. And we do have itemized work. One of them, for example, is board all structures on that property, remove all exterior trash, debris, and junk, and cut and remove all weeds. So, that was the scope of the work for that property that the contractor did.
Sir, so the package that we received on Saturday that went through the whole thing, on the post-abatement, the pictures they have in here? You look at ours, especially with vegetation. They've put, it looks like they painted the wood and replaced some of it, but the vegetation is identical on both sides. And this was done three weeks before this. So, I beg to differ when he says that it was still there when the contractor went out. The contractor is presenting the county with a fraudulent bill.
Okay. Is there any thoughts from other board members on this? If not, can we continue this to the next part? I guess that would be the June 8th meeting, and give you guys a chance to submit whatever evidence, information you guys have to the Public Works Department? And then, our offices can be in touch and review this, take this up at another meeting once you guys have had a chance to submit all that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Can we just say, we're not saying we don't owe something, but the amount is what we're contesting, is we don't...
Understood. I appreciate it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Sure. Go ahead.
Sounds like the period of time between when you say you did some work, and the contractor went out was very short.
Possibly about three weeks, twenty-two days.
Okay. And I'm not, this is not, I'm not casting aspersions on their department. It takes them a long time due to legal requirements to engage a contractor that fast.
Absolutely. I understand that.
So, what does that typically take? Several weeks?
At least, yes. Yeah. And we're not contesting that we did not do it in a timely manner, in that the problem is that we have is that the pictures taking on December 12th, I believe it is, which looks like the contractor's proof of work being performed, is almost 90% identical to what we did three weeks prior.
What I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you out here with something.
Yeah, sir.
When you use the word fraudulent, that's a very specific word. And what I'm gathering is the contractor went out, took a look at the property, and made a bid, or gave you a price. And then, you went out and did some of his work for him.
Right.
But that's, when he shows up to do the work, if some of the stuff has already been taken care of, it's not that he didn't do the work, it's that somebody beat him to the punch. So, I don't know that he's, and I don't even know who the contractor is, but I think, I'm just giving you some free advice, and it's worth every penny, is I would be careful characterizing someone as fraudulent that we don't even know who they are. That's...
And I...
Thank you.
Thank you for your advice. I work with contracts day in and day out, and we have the same thing. We have contractors come out and put a bid in, but if a portion of it is already completed or no longer needed, the contractor de-scopes his work. He cannot bill for something he did not perform. In my arena...
Mr. President Maggard? Thank you. Sir, that's exactly the question I want to ask of them. Was the bid componentized for specific tasks to be performed, or was it one bid for the entire job?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, based on the record that we have, again, the bid was taken based on the work that was left. I suppose if the contractor were to do the entire work, including what she did, it would cost a lot, a lot more than $5,000.
Well, I think that's the interesting thing for you to have to figure out, is he says that he did some of that work after that bid was submitted, and the contractor says that he did that work after the bid was submitted. So, does the property owner get any credit for work he did? And can he document to you that he actually did it? I don't know who eats the difference, but it's, that may, you know, we do many, many, many of these hearings, and if that is a common ambiguity that we need to cure going forward, I want to make sure we do that so that somebody else isn't left on the spot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Pope, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. What I think we're going to boil this down to is verifying the date that the contractor made a bid for the work to be done, and then verify whether they did their work prior to that or after that. And we'll get to the bottom of this.
Great. So, we'll go ahead and just take this up again at our June 8th meeting. If we can, I'll make a motion to move it.
One second.
I'd like to say one other thing that the board consider.
Sir.
Listening to what Ms. Anon said...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do you want to say something?
No, no, go ahead.
Is that the contractor came and put a bid in for the work, and then only performed the work that had not been completed. So, we did not know what his original bid was versus what he paid. So, that's something I think needs to be considered into it, too, that I believe, I understand where, you know, you're saying, what's bid done before. But what I'm hearing is two things on there. So, I just, when we submit this, that'd be viewed in that aspect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Okay, thank you.
June 8th?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. Having no additional items to consider, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. With that objection, we're adjourned.